I would like to call a board, the regular scheduled board meeting of the Parish Union Schools District and Ninety-Five Days of Education from Monday, November the fifth. I thought the record showed that all members are present. The voting sequence for this meeting is as follows. Calvert, Hassler, Isip, Sanchez, Tull, Bailey, and Davis. Audience to visitors, anybody in the audience, Mr. Davis?
I haven't heard anything about your search for a superintendent. How is that coming along?
I'm going to defer it to Mr. Davis.
Well, we were still in those discussions. I would advise that we're looking, we just got the consolidation study, the independent fund back in the last sixty days. So, we're going to review that too, to see if there's any possibility of discussions with Crestwood about possibly moving forward. So, that being said, I would think within the next thirty days, Chuck will have a definite answer on proceeding with consolidation vote or continuing with what we're doing. So, we don't want to take any action until we know for sure what happens with that study and whether we're going to use it or not. That's the best answer we have right now. Again, we are in discussions with them about that very topic.
Now, my guess is that in Connie's contract, there is a time that you have to be notified whether they can retire you or not.
Oh, yeah, that's not really for...
It's like four months.
Okay, that's...
Yeah, we're a long way from that.
You're not in January and...
Yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
We can do it earlier, we can do it later, as far as that goes, but that study, I think, and we're going to post it, I think, on the website.
Oh, and we're going to wait and then Crestwood's going to post it.
Yeah, and gave us more, and this is just, I speak only for me, but it was more favorable to that possibility than I've ever seen it. Plus, it's done by an independent third party outside of the district, which makes it defendable. So, that being said, we want to wait and see, can we move forward in that regard before we commit to a long-term contract with a new superintendent, because as you know, administrative contracts carry over regardless of that action. So, I don't want to put that cart before the horse until we know that answer.
Thank you.
So, within thirty, I think by the next meeting, we'll have a definitive answer on that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Just FYI, the radio speaking, this is happening for our schools here. The Paris High School, much in tiger alumni organization, for an agency account, an community foundation, raised considerable amount of funds, so forth and so on. And as a result of that, they were going to be starting scholarships, but they're going to be band camp scholarships for kids currently in our school system, both for Mayo, Crestwood, and the high school. And they're going to be giving out band camp scholarships, so the kids who are currently involved in the music program can use those scholarships, go to camp, then come back and share that with the students already here. Many times, we give out scholarships and students going to college, maybe don't return to Paris, where we think that this is our biggest benefit for our bucks. So, we're going to be supporting kids, both at Mayo, Crestwood, and the high school going to band camps, and they have done an outstanding job. And the money keeps graciously coming in, so we're very gratified. So, we'll be issuing that to the various music teachers in both District Ninety-Five, Unit Four, and Paris Quart and High School.
And that alumni event was really successful.
Ah, yeah, yes, it was successful, both in attendance, in a presentation, and I have them all in a database, and I will be sharing with them about our new prospective high school coming up in the next month. Make sure that they are aware of the opportunities they have to be part of the growth of the new high school. Trust me, I'm going to do that. Don't put that in.
Anyone else?
Um, I had Mr. Tull ask me, so they'll probably ask later in the meeting too, and he may have to leave a little early. Wanted you to just say a little bit something about your mock election and Mayo School.
Yeah, we had Mindy Wooten put together, along with the assistance of Adam Clausen, basically a mock debate, and it went very well. We had four different students who participated as actually coming up and giving the presentation. We had Barack Obama, Joe Biden, Mitt Romney, and Paul Ryan. And those students were Robert Sanders, Chris Sheeran, Salem Isip, and Max Holloway. And the four of them put together a speech and actually debated one another. We also had a group of students who dressed up as the Secret Service. We had two students for each member as they walked in. We also had students who were in the press box, who were sitting at a table, who were supposed to be the press. Mr. Clausen was our moderator. The Channel Ten news came and recorded, and it went very well. And then our cheerleaders actually put together cheers on getting students to vote. And we had four cheerleaders who were Democrats and four cheerleaders who were Republicans. And then they voted. And tomorrow, we're actually getting together, where there's going to be ballot boxes where you actually go in and get to vote, and we'll actually see how it does. If you go to mailmiddleschool.com, you will see a link where you can actually go over to the Tarahua News and watch the video. Also, on mailmiddleschool.com, this is in the bottom left-hand corner, I input pictures that Mr. Gates has taken. And if you would like the actual complete video footage from it, you can talk to Mr. Gates and he'll gladly bring you a DVD. And so, I think it was really great to have the kids do this. This all started back a couple of weeks ago, but we actually had to go through and register to vote. And if you don't have your registration card, you don't get to vote. And you had to have your student ID card to register to vote. And so, they had their ID cards and registration cards, and watched the debate, and got to go back and forth, and there's been a lot of discussion classes. I know that our social studies courses have actually went through and drew up electoral college maps and made their predictions, and we're going to see what comes true. So, it's pretty exciting to have all the hands on and all the teachers kind of like that.
Thank you for that announcement, Mr. Davis.
I actually had one question though. Can you tell everyone what percent of the students actually registered to vote out of all the student body in Mayo?
I don't know that. Have you heard?
I thought it was around fifty percent. That's pretty accurate.
I made sure to vote for mine.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. In your packet, you have the board minutes, the rest of the bills, and the secretary's report, I'm sorry, the treasurer's report from September. Does anyone have any questions on consent agenda decisions? If not, take a motion to approve.
So, move.
Calvert?
Yes.
Hassler?
Yes.
Isip?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Tull?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Davis is yes. Secretary's report?
Yes, we got a thank you note from Loretta Boyer, thanking us for our memorial contribution to the food pantry following her husband's passing. And we also got a thank you from the Paris Community Nurse and Welfare Association that we made in memory of Pam Roberts.
Superintendent's agenda?
The first thing on the agenda this evening is Brian Bradley is here from Kemper CPA, and he will go through with you. You have some handouts on hand. He doesn't have the bound booklets ready for us yet, but he will go through the audit report that they completed recently.
I was told to make this as brief as possible, so I properly prepared it. Just got a fine approved reading and printing and filing, so I'll go bring those up next week. Overall, the audit went very well this year. My own schedule of problems is why I'm here in November, set off October, but very good. I don't have any reports to show you, I'm just going to tell you what the highlights are, and I'm going to get on more interesting things that people seem to usually care about as far as numbers go. So, as far as the audit report, you know, we do a financial statement through the ISBE financial statement, so that's not really a generally accepted financial statement. So, you get two opinions on your audit report. The first one says these financial statements don't present fairly, because they're not really financial statements, they're a special report. But then the second opinion is that these financial statements are materially correct on the ISBE direct report basis. So, that's a clean audit opinion on your financial statements, which is obviously what you want. So, the auditor's opinion is clean. There's two other opinions we have to issue. Since you pursue federal funding, we have to issue a report about your internal controls over your finances and over your compliance with laws and regulations. Happy to report that you are my only audit client ever to not have an internal control plan.
Wow.
That's take a vow.
What are they doing, really?
Say that again for that table. We're the only client that, what, only audit client?
We didn't cover it.
And as that's admitted, you also have the benefit of having the CPA on the board that takes care of one finding that we have on virtually every client. So, insurance controls, no findings, compliance with laws and regulations, we did not note anything we have to disclose, so there's no findings there. Then there is a final report we have to issue. Since you get more than five hundred thousand federal money, we have to do, you know, a specific audit for federal money, you know, single audit is what we have to do. So, this year, we selected the Title I and the supplemental nutrition program as the programs that we tested. So, when we do that, we have to specifically test a lot of compliance harms with those programs, very specific, a lot of work goes into that. And I have to report that there are no findings over that as well. So, clean audit report, possible, and obviously watching what you hear. Other than that, I've printed out two pages that have what I think people find the most interesting on the AFR. The first page is your financial profile. Yeah, there's a couple of things here that I find interesting. The item B, the results of operations, just as an overall entity, you brought in a little over ten and a half million dollars. You spent ten point three, so overall, you have positive two hundred forty-one thousand on movement. So, you know, just in perspective as a whole, pretty positive here. We'll give them the individual funds on the back. Then item D is your long-term debt, you know, your legal long-term debt that you can incur based upon your assessed valuation is ten point three million dollars. And with your new bond issue, you're at nine point seven, so you're still under that limit, even though your, you know, your valuation did go down. So, you're under your limit, you probably don't have any big plans coming up, so you're in good shape. But that is a big change from last year, obviously, the bond issue. You turn the page, this is the ISBE kind of a quick pat edition of how your finances are. And I've been here, you know, years where you're in financial warning, you know, financial watch, how to report that you are in recognition category to meet this year. You can kind of look at the criteria, it has to do with, you know, your revenues and expenses and available fund balances and your debt. Your overall score did go down slightly from last year, but I think that that's due in large part to the bond issue, your long-term debt. So, that's obviously a financial indicator, it's not positive, but it's necessary. The financial recognition is the highest category you get, so that's a good place to be. Okay, and the next two pages, I won't spend a lot of time on, but what they are is the summary out of the report. And the first two pages are your balance sheet, so it shows you the cash balances at the end of the fiscal year and the available funds, basically. You only have two reservations on the available funds. There's some federal grant companies that weren't spent in June, but they are by now. And then in your municipal retirement social security fund, a couple of years ago, you know, ISBE said you need to start telling us how much that's for social security. So, out of that fund, it's column G there at the bottom. You know, you've got two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars available, you know, twenty-five thousand is earmarked for social security. Okay, that's really all that means. It's still available, you're going to use it, it's got special limitations. Okay, if you turn past all of that, you'll come to a title, it's page twenty-eight, and this is the operating expenses per pupil. I could go into a lot of detail with you, but what this does is it takes the total expenses of the district, everything you spent, and then adds back certain things, you know, consider as the operating. And a big part of that, I do want to point out, I think I pointed out before, is I believe it's line fifty-three for payments out of their districts, so two point two million dollars. That's the tuition going into the TOA. They take that out of your operating expenses. I think we talked about this first year, that really brought your operating expenses per pupil down. The state hasn't changed how they want that reported as far as I know, because you're still a pioneer in this area, so. But the bottom line is that, you know, your ADA of thirteen fifty-five, after all those adjustments, your operating expenses per pupil is six thousand sixteen dollars. And I got a comparison we'll look at compared to last year here in a minute. If you turn the page, there's some additional adjustments that are made for money that comes from the federal government. Okay, they consider that not having to be provided by local sources or state sources. So, that's your tuition charge for capital. And it's, you know, mathematical here, but the bottom line is the per capita tuition charge is four thousand seven hundred and five dollars. And again, we'll look at the comparison on that, so. The last page is the one-page summary I usually hand you. It just shows you, you know, your financial profile, what your long-term debt margin is. And again, there's significant change there. Your average A of attendance did decrease slightly, you know, it's not large, but it's a small decrease. But what I find interesting is when you look at your operating expenses per pupil, even though your, you know, your attendance went down, your operating expenses per pupil went down forty-five dollars per pupil. So, it's not big, but it shows you you're able to control your costs, you know. The tuition charge, it did come up slightly, and to the best of my understanding and calculation, I'm chalking that up to last year, you had more AR money, the American Investment Act. Some of that flowed through the state and replaced what would be state money. So, when it was federal, it would come out, and now it's not. So, I believe that's why that ticked up a little bit. Okay, and then we list each one of your cash balances, and what's changed here was, you know, the three that stick out, transportation fund, the O M, and capital projects, obviously, capital projects, you know, bond money sitting there for the new building. And then on the O M fund, there, you know, it's accumulated some, there was a transfer, the track fund transfer, and there's a little bit of bond issue went into, the working cash fund, I'm sorry, was a significant part of moving that, so I dealt with that fund. But overall, you know, the finances are very solid, certainly comparative many years ago, so it's always enjoyable to see your numbers compared to some. The bottom number, you know, I don't live here, so I don't know what the situation is. E A V did decline, which, you know, that's always a kind of a red light, my line, but hopefully that's not anything that's going to continue. You know, it did go down almost a million dollars, which at your rate isn't big money, but it's, you know, you'd like to see that go up every year, so. That was very brief and very fast, but overall, very good audit. I'll be happy to take any questions, or like I always say, we have to come after a board meeting, or if anyone needs to call individually, that's all part of the policy.
Brian, what, have you made any kind of projections, if that should pass by the state, that the districts have to pay pensions and all of that? Or you just wait till that happens and then deal with it?
Yeah.
We'll project.
You know, the way the levies work for retirement, the district should, anything that's made, the district should have time to change the levy to cover that. Now, that just means the taxpayers, you know, if that's the answer is, so I'm, you know, I'm not sure how that will happen. What was that? I'm sorry, was that Downstate only, or was that, I'm mistaken, I forgot, Chicago's not including that.
Oh, no, they don't include Chicago.
I thought they were excluded from that division.
We don't want to say.
No, we don't want to. Thank you, Brian. When you get your round copies, we'll be waiting for you.
Hey, congratulations to Hannah. I mean, that's phenomenal. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
We wanted to the old days, didn't we? If they keep shorting us on money, so, the state E A V gets more difficult, so. All right, thanks, Brian.
Honey, I wanted to say one thing, because I don't think, maybe Doug was here, but the rest of them weren't out here. But when I joined the board in two thousand and one, we were paying close to sixty thousand dollars a year for an audit. Yeah, we were also paying the treasurer, I believe, what, six thousand?
Yeah, probably around ten.
Okay. And I was also told when I came on the board that we had two sets of books, which no accountant or auditor wants to hear. And I was, I asked why, and they said, well, the internal staff at District Ninety-Five is not capable of keeping the books. And I said, well, we're going to teach them to be capable, or we're going to get new people, because this is ridiculous. So, I think we need to give a round of applause to Anna and you.
And I want to add, that same year, Tom, we reduced staff by, in the central office, for our bookkeeper, a full-time bookkeeper that did nothing but that, and still got our audit for, I think, twelve or thirteen thousand that year, let go our treasurer, and one board member stepped in as treasurer, and we did have everything covered. So, it was just a simple matter of this is what you have to do. And Anna picked up most of the slack on that, she was the one less person in the office as well.
So, I think, Anna, you showed them you can do.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
So, I think if you just look, you know, you do the math for two thousand one, two thousand twelve.
Oh, you did half a pound, half a pound.
It involved like fifty thousand, you know, you're talking almost a half a more dollar.
Yeah, you would be.
You did once, that's a dollar.
No, I'm not Tom.
Tom is.
Tom did.
And just say no to everybody. That's all you have. Really, no, people have gotten everything that you really needed to. I think that's a good thing. You see, we're spending the money on peoples, so the money's going wherever you need to go. It is going to the children, the students in the classroom, so that's always a good thing to see, that most of our money is staying there, so.
So, congratulations there.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda would be the tentative levy. And you'll see in your packet the levy for the thirteen fourteen school year. You'll note that we did not levy the Tork Fund, as I had indicated in our last meeting, that we have reserves to cover our wood comp for this year. We'll let the tentative levy lay for thirty days before we adopt it in December. If anyone does have questions or wants to review the levy, they could come in within that thirty-day period. We will hold a truth in taxation hearing, and this is something I have done ever since I was the superintendent. So, anytime you levy over the five percent, you have to hold the truth in taxation, and don't want any misunderstanding. As you saw, our E A V went down last year. So, I could, we calculate, and I had Anna calculate over a nine percent increase, our E A V's not going to go up nine percent. But if it would go up over five, we would capture that money up to nine percent. So, I've always just taken the risk, we will only get our share. It would be wonderful if the E A V went up like that, because that's good for the whole community anyway. We'd be not getting any more than our fair share, but if we don't ask for it, we wouldn't get it.
Yes, you leave it on the table if you don't.
I leave it up, yes, we'd leave it on the table if the E A V for some reason would go up more than that. So, I don't usually quibble over going over, I just do it, it's a guestimate estimate, we get what we get. We only get our percentage for what the actual E A V comes in at. So, to me, if you're going to gamble, you might as well hold the truth in taxation hearing, say if it does go up nine percent, other than your bond and interest fund, your I M R, your social security, you can only levy what you need. Then our ed fund, and all of our other transportation and special ed, we can levy for the nine percent. You will only get, though, once again, what actually the E A V goes up. So, at this time, I would ask the board to approve the tentative levy for the thirteen fourteen school year.
So.
Any discussion? If not, Calvert?
Yes.
Hassler?
Yes.
Isip?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Tull?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Davis is yes.
The next, we had a request to rescind, a retirement request. We have Loretta Boyer, who is a secretary at the high school, and who just wrote her thank you card for her husband, just recently passed away, due to some of her seeing challenges there and some things in her life. She did go today, and she asked that she rescind that retirement request, she feels she needs to work at least a couple more years. So, at this time, I would ask the board to approve the rescinding of the retirement request for Loretta Boyer. She didn't receive any incentives or anything that way, she just had asked to retire this year, and now she has changed her mind on that.
So, move.
Any discussion? If not, Calvert?
Yes.
Hassler?
Yes.
Isip?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Tull?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Davis is yes.
Okay, next, under employment, we have a recommendation from Mr. Perry to employ Bradley Colt Hollerin as volunteer seventh grade boys basketball coach. He indicated that Colt is currently taking the A S E P courses for coaching. Board's also recommending Heather Mccluskey as a volunteer volleyball coach. Heather is the B D teacher at Mayo School. I'd ask that the board approve the employment of both Colt Hollerin as volunteer boys basketball and Heather Mccluskey as volunteer volleyball coach at Mayo School.
So, move.
Any discussion? If not, Calvert?
Yes.
Hassler?
Yes.
Isip?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Tull?
Yes.
Bailey?
Davis is yes.
Okay, I just want the under informational to, delegate to the board conference. The board conference will be next week, actually, and for those who are ten, one, if anybody's interested in being the delegate, there is a meeting that's involved that you go to, and then we usually appoint an alternate as well. So, anybody interested in... Everybody jump!
We need that quickness.
John, would you like to leave?
Oh, okay. Come on, okay. And then Beadle, you want to be our alternate?
I've been older than the last.
Have you ever had to go?
I'll be the old.
Okay, so we'll be John and Beadle. Now, watch, this year, Beadle's on first. Okay, well, that, then we'll put that in, and then what we're meeting, and once we get them checking in, they'll have a brief fair debate to say for the delegates meeting. Okay?
Do we need to go on that?
We really don't. As I said, I'm looking at revising our risk management plan, we send our legal counsel to review that. I really felt like under reported committees, once mine's done, I kind of highlighted some things from our last committee meeting, and if you want to read some of those or discuss any of the things you did, we'll have another meeting on the twelfth before the co-op meeting. So, it's the end of superintendent's agenda, and if you want to go to reported committees, then you might want to.
All right, reported committees.
The building construction, of course, we are all out there on Friday, so the earth movement and everything has started. We're still working on an easement for the sanding area.
And some of the utilities, I think, that...
Yeah, and the electric can go ahead, but apparently we have to wait on the gas, you know, exactly where the boundaries are. I mean, everything seems to be working as it's supposed to. We're still checking into widening, something like Route One.
Right, Route One, and also working on the road there on twelve hundred.
Yeah, the school and the railroad crossings, so there's still some things that we need to take care of, but things are going as planned, so.
Yeah, they really anticipate getting the building we had now this fall, and that's what the goal, and from what I've heard, voices are moving right along.
I'd like to add some, some concern about that, that's building out there, the COVID's swamp or whatever, you know, I've heard that. I talked to Donnie Wright the other day, and he said that it's solid. They've been real surprised how solid it is now, and there's nothing, going to have to worry about any of that kind of stuff. So, if everybody's worried about it, then we...
That's good, because, you know, we have heard that from time to time, and like I said, voices have put most of the material there that was there from the leg, and they're the ones dealing with it.
He said he was, I mean, they were, but he said it is really hard to pack it down like five feet. They were pleasantly surprised, so it's not going to be...
They won at ninety-five, and they're well above that.
Yeah, yeah, so they're, everybody's upset.
And Turner does have a person on site every day for, from seventy-five to eighty percent of the day. Our construction management team has a person there even while they're doing the site prep and everything, so they did mention that. We talked a little bit about cameras, and I think that was in the paper, you'd already reported that, Sam, a lot of this you reported, that, we talked about the cost of that, so we'll probably just take pictures, daily pictures, and keep up data on it.
New signs up to...
What, and the new sign, yes, the sign up there.
It's a building sign.
And it was, it was a very, very nice groundbreaking ceremony, so for those of you who were there, check if you weren't there, but it was, it was very, very nice, a beautiful day, lots of dignitaries there. I think the gentleman from the state told us three or four times, it was twenty-four point two billion, so hopefully, we got that on tape. He said it once from the governor, you know...